Come on, let's rock! Big boss man. Can't you hear me when I call? Big boss man. Hear me when I call? Man, you ain't so big. You just tall, that's all. Well, you got me working, boss man. Working round the clock. I need a drink of water, but you don't let me stop, big boss man. Can't you hear me when I call? Man, you ain't so big. You just tall, that's all. Put on your red dress, baby. Yeah, I won't go out at night. Put on that red dress, baby. You know we're going out at night. We don't go out, woman, no. You know they're just a mess, start of life. Yeah, I gotta pride myself, boss man. Wanna be, treat me right. Make me breakfast in the morning. Make me dinner tonight, big boss man. Can't you hear me when I call? You ain't so big. Yeah, you just tall, that's all. Thank you. We're pleased to be here today.
Hi Brenda!
Warming up you guys for Bernie Sanders. Let's hear it for our Senator Sanders. Little rumba for ya. Don't worry, plenty of room to dance out here. Yeah, with a tear in my eye, a pain down in my heart. With a tear in my eye, a pain right in my heart. Look at this desperation, so many miles apart. Every minute of the hour, every hour of the day. That's when I'm thinking about you, baby, is what I gotta say. I feel like I'm going crazy, we're so, so far away. Love and understanding have to keep me strong. I get a smile on my face when you're talking on the phone. It's the only way I make it, I'm a long, long way from home. Yeah, I'm lonesome traveler, my heart's so broken. Yeah, I'm lonesome, lonesome traveler, girl, my heart's so blue. But am I only consolation without a soon be home with you? Thank you, baby.
Box pattern downtown?
Yes, sir, downtown. Take it downtown, yeah. Well, I'm tore down, almost level with the ground. Yeah, I'm tore down, nearly level with the ground. I feel like this when my baby can't be found. Well, I went to the river to jump in. My baby come by and said, "I'll tell you where." Well, I'm tore down, nearly level with the ground. Baby loved me, but I can't get no sound. Well, I love you, baby, with all my heart and soul. A love like mine can never grow old. I love you in the morning, in the evening too. Give me time to leave me, I'll go straight to you. I'm tore down, almost level with the ground. Well, I feel like this when my baby can't be found. Let it swerve on guitar. I love you, woman, with all my might. A love like mine's just out of sight. I lie for you, baby, if you want me to. I really can't believe you'd love me too. But I'm tore down, I'm nearly level with the ground. Well, I feel like this when my baby can't be found. Well, I feel like this when my baby can't be found. Oh, you're too kind, thank you. We're the Bob McKenzie Band. A little timey blues here for ya. Somebody Jimmy Reed. You got me running, you got me hiding. You got me run, hide, hide, run everywhere you want, so let it roll. Yeah, yeah, yeah. You got me doing what you want me, baby, what you want me to do. Hell, I went up, I'm going down. I'm going up, down, down, up, everything you want, so let it roll, babe. Yeah, yeah, yeah. You got me doing what you want me, baby, what you want me to do. You got me feeping, got me hiding. Got me beep, hide, hide, beep, everywhere you want, so let it roll. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Got me doing what you want, babe, baby, what you want me to do. You got me running, you got me hiding. You got me run, hide, hide, run everywhere you want, so let me roll. Yeah, yeah, yeah. You got me doing what you want me, baby, what you want me to do. Thank you very much. Ladies and gentlemen, Bernie Sanders, Senator Bernie Sanders. Okay, thank you Newport. And let me thank the Bob McKenzie Blues Band for their music. I want to thank all of you for coming out on this beautiful sunny day. On the other hand, we think with a little bit of luck, it's not gonna rain. So that'll be a good thing. What I wanted to do today, before I introduce our guest speakers, we have some great guest speakers. I want to thank Senator Bobby Starr and Representative Catherine Sims and John Castle, who's superintendent of North Country Supervisory Union, and Matt Maxwell. But before I introduce them, I wanted to tell you why we're here today. We as a nation are facing very difficult times, no question about it. World is facing very difficult times and it is easy to get discouraged. And I don't think there's anybody in America who is not discouraged one moment or another. You just look at the issues that we are dealing with today. We're dealing with this COVID thing, which has now taken well over 600,000 lives in America, caused a whole lot of sickness. We have gone through a year where kids could not go to school, where grandparents could not be with their kids, where people are isolated. And the result of that has been an increase in emotional problems in this country. And right now, as we speak, because of the Delta variant, you got ICUs and hospitals all across this country that are overflowing with people, mostly people who were not vaccinated. So let me detour and just urge everybody, beg of you. We are doing better than almost any state in the country in terms of our vaccinations. We can do better. Please get vaccinated, save your own life. And it is extremely troubling, extremely troubling, because I've met some of these folks, that there is a lot of disinformation out there for whatever reason. Hard to understand why. But the people, as you know, who are in hospitals today, who are dying, are overwhelmingly people who have not been vaccinated. Guys, guys. So we're dealing with COVID, which is a major problem. Then on top of that, we're dealing with climate. Now, there may be some people who don't believe that climate change is real. And all that I ask of you is turn on your TV. Pick up a paper and find out what's going on, not only in this country, but what's going on all over the world. All of you know what's going on in New Orleans right now. People without electricity, people whose basements are flooded. I was in Detroit a couple of weeks ago, didn't get a whole lot of press. Thousands of people lost their electricity, their basements were flooded. New York, 25, 30 people are dead because of torrential rains. New Jersey, in Europe, they have had the hottest July, hottest day ever, last month in the history of record-keeping. In Siberia right now, there is a fire where the smoke is going thousands of miles. And here in Vermont, believe it or not, we have been breathing smoke-filled air coming from Oregon, 3,000 miles away, because Oregon is burning and California is burning. So anyone who thinks that climate change is not real is dangerously wrong. And as some of you may know, there's a report that came out from the group that studies this issue the most, the Intergovernmental Commission on Climate Change. And what they are saying is if we do not get our act together in the next few years, the situation will become much worse. So that the one out of 500-year floods will be taking place every single year. More of our forests will be burning. So we're dealing with COVID, we're dealing with climate, we're dealing with foreign policy. I mean, the good news is that after 20 years and a trillion dollars and the loss of 2,400 lives, finally, we are out of Afghanistan. And that's the good news. And the President deserves credit for taking that difficult decision. The bad news is, is that the corrupt government, despite a trillion dollars and creating an entire military, the government there was so corrupt, they couldn't even stand on their own for a few weeks and they collapsed. And we all saw what happened at the airport and the loss of 13 brave American soldiers. And we're saddened and heartbroken about that. So that's some of the issues that we are dealing with as a nation. But what I'm here to say today is if there was ever a time in our lifetimes when we've got to be strong, when we cannot allow people, politicians, to divide us up based on the color of our skin or where we were born, or our sexual orientation, or whatever, now is the time for us to come together as a people, as a state and as a nation, to focus on the real issues facing our country, not get divided up. And that is what we've got to do. And I believe that despite the difficulties of this moment, that if we do stand together, not only will we solve these very serious problems, but I believe we can move this country in a much better direction than we have ever been. That is our vision and we can't get this hardened. We've got to keep fighting, we've got to keep looking forward to the future, not only for ourselves, but more importantly, for the children and our grandchildren and future generations. And I want to tell you also, that in the midst of all of this, we are making some real progress. Now, I know, believe me, it is easy to beat up on government, especially the federal government, the big bad federal government. Now, I know, believe me, it is easy to beat up on government, especially the federal government, the big bad federal government. I know about the bureaucracy, and I know about the waste, and I know about all of that stuff. But I want you to think back for a moment, just the progress we have made in the last year. A year ago, we would not have been here in the park, we would have been in our homes. A year ago, we would not have been vaccinated, now 70% of the American people are vaccinated. A year ago, unemployment was soaring, we have in the last year cut unemployment in half, that is no small thing. And in fact, right here in Vermont, now, I don't know so much about Newport, but I'll tell you, in Burlington, there are stores that are closing down in midday restaurants, because there, we have a major labor shortage, and I'll talk about that again. Labor shortage is a problem, but I'd rather have a labor shortage than 10, 15% unemployment, and that's where we are today. And I'll tell you something else that's going on, we don't think about it much, wages are going up in America. As the economic crisis that we have had for so many years, it's not just unemployment, it is that millions of our people up here, maybe more than any other place in the state, are working for starvation wages, and we're beginning to see an increase in wages. I myself am fighting to raise the minimum wage in this country to at least 15 bucks an hour. And I'll tell you something else that we did, and again, it's easy to take this thing for granted, and it's easy to dismiss the big bad federal government, but let me tell you what we have done. In the midst of the economic downturn as a result of COVID, we managed to get checks out to every working-class, middle-class person in this country and their kids, $1,400 apiece. Now, you know what that meant? I don't, in Vermont, no one wants to admit, you know, taking money and all that stuff. Believe me, I've heard it a thousand times, but in the midst of an economic downturn, what we managed to do is get cash into people's pockets. I remember a few blocks away from where I live in Burlington, and I know it's true up here, there were lines of cars, lines of cars, who were lining up in order to get an emergency food package. You did that up here too, I assume, right? All right, people were hungry, people who never in their lives asked for anything from the government, needed a box of food to feed their kids. And that is why, in the middle of the night, it's like 4 o'clock in the morning after 16 hours of debate, the Vice President of the United States cast the deciding vote for the American Rescue Plan, which made sure that every working-class American and their children would get that $1,400 check. And we extended unemployment. Again, no one wants to be proud that they're on unemployment, well, you don't have a job, and there are no jobs, you need unemployment. We extended that, and we added another $300 supplement on top of what the states were offering. And that gave dignity and hope to millions of people all over this country. We put billions of dollars to make sure that the vaccines got out to communities all over this country. And here is something else that we did in that American Rescue Plan, which was rather extraordinary. What we said is that at a time when childhood poverty in America is higher than almost any other industrialized country on earth, when working families right here in Newport are having a hard time raising their kids, just don't have the cash, it takes a lot of money to raise a kid. What we did is got a child tax, child payment of $300 for every child in America, every month. You've got two kids, that's 7,200 bucks, you're making $30,000 a year, you know what? That makes a hell of a lot of difference, and you know what that did? That cut childhood poverty in America by over 50%. Now, I know, believe me, I know, it's not fashionable to thank the government for everything, everybody hates the government, and believe me, we could all come up with good reasons to hate the government. But it is important to understand that in the midst of this terrible, terrible time, the COVID thing, the economic downturn, that in fact, we have come a long way in the last year precisely because of what the government has done. And we should be proud of that, because in a democratic civilized society, that's what the government is not, me, it is us, all right, that's what it is. And in this case, we, as a nation, responded to the pain and the despair and the crises facing families all over our state and all over the nation. All right, that's where we have been, let me talk about where we are right now. No great secret to anybody who is here, that we have strong political divisions in the country. What we're working on now, and in a sense, I'm here today, is the Chairman of the U.S. Senate Budget Committee, and I want to talk to you about what we're doing. We're looking around the country, we're doing something rather unusual. Instead of saying, "Well, you know, we're going to spend 2% more on education, and we're going to cut healthcare by 3%, and spend a little here, or spend a little there." What the President has done, and I've worked with the President and worked with leaders all over the country, what we have done is something very radical. What we have said is, "Let's take a look at the structural, long-term problems that our country is facing, and see how we can deal with them." Let's not throw money in this, that, and the other, what are the problems facing the country, and how do we deal with them? So, for a start, everybody here knows that in Vermont, and all over this country as a matter of fact, we have a massive crisis in terms of infrastructure. All you all know what infrastructure is, that's roads, and bridges, and water systems, and wastewater plants, that's infrastructure. Our state, many of our bridges are in real disrepair, Burlington, other cities, got real potholes there, people disappeared, don't come out for weeks. Water, I don't know if you know this, water is a major, major crisis in this country. You've got millions of people turn on their kitchen taps, and the water they get is undrinkable, I didn't know that until recently, but that is really the case. And you've got wastewater plants, which are very expensive to build, I know we built one when I was mayor of Burlington, it is very, very expensive. So you've got an infrastructure crisis all over the country, and people have been talking about it, you all know, Republicans have been talking about it, Democrats have been talking about it, everybody's talking about the infrastructure, nobody's done anything. Well, this time around, in what they call a bipartisan infrastructure bill, there is going to be, I hope, $550 billion of new money going into rebuilding our crumbling roads and bridges and water systems, 550 billion. And by the way, I'm on the committee, I'm on the committee that wrote this particular part of the bill, and trust me, Vermont did very, very well in that process. So I can tell our members of the legislature, a lot of money will be coming into the state, okay? So that's very important, but there is, and that bill, by the way, it's called bipartisan because it was bipartisan. It had every member, as some of you know, right now, in the Senate, where I work, there are 50 people in the Democratic Caucus, there are 50 people in the Republican Caucus, that makes life very interesting. And that's why, at 4 o'clock in the morning, the Vice President casts the deciding vote, making it 51-50 for the Rescue Plan. So we're divided 50-50, and this bill, the infrastructure bill that I mentioned, passed with all Democratic Caucus support, plus 19 Republicans, 69 votes. But, but the other bill that I have been working on, which I'm going to talk to you about, is not going to get any Republican support at all. And that bill is probably going to take a long, long debate to pass, but I believe we will pass it, probably with a 51-50 vote. And here is what this bill is about. What this bill starts off with by saying is that in America today, if you look around what's going around in the nation, we have growing income and wealth inequality, all right? We don't talk about it much, the media doesn't talk about it, because the media is owned by very, very wealthy people, large corporations. But what is going on, I don't know if you know this, you've got two people in America who own more wealth than the bottom 40% of the American people, you got that? Two people on top, 40% down below. You've got 1% owning more wealth than the bottom 92%, and during the pandemic, the wealth of the people on top has exploded, while at the same time, many working-class people have literally died, because they're working in the grocery stores, or they're driving a bus, or they're delivering mail, or whatever they're doing, that puts them in contact with other people. So you're seeing more income and wealth inequality in America than we have seen in 100 years, that's the reality. And then there's another reality, while the very rich become richer, you've got a very broken tax system. And that means that if you are a billionaire in America, it is quite possible that in a given year, you will pay zero in federal taxes, you got that? Why is that? Well, for a start, the billionaires and their lobbyists help write the tax laws, they write it to their advantage. Second of all, they have got all kinds of lawyers and accountants who help them legally avoid paying their taxes. So what this bill that we're working on says is that at a time when working families are struggling, when we've got over half a million people sleeping out on the streets because we don't have enough housing, yes, we are going to ask the wealthy and large corporations to start paying their fair share of taxes. And when we raise this money, which will be about $3.5 trillion, a lot of money, but we'll raise it, by not asking anybody in America, the President has said this over and over again, and I agree with him, nobody in America earning less than $400,000 a year will pay a nickel more in federal taxes. The taxes will be paid by the people on top, who should be paying it. So what are we going to do with the money? What are we going to do with it? We're going to look at the problems, let's start with the children. Right now, if we do not extend, the American Rescue Plan was an emergency plan for one year, that $300 payment to working parents will expire at the end of this year unless we pass the Reconciliation Bill. And it's imperative that we do that, because the working parents need that money. So in the bill is an extension of that $300 child payment. We are also going to revolutionize the way we do childcare in America, which is now unaffordable. And I'll tell you what else we are planning to do, and that is make pre-K for 3 and 4-year olds free. So in other words, what we are talking about is extending public education down to 3 years old, rather than just starting at a kindergarten. And think about what that will mean for working families, and if we do those things, by the way, in terms of the economy, the estimate is there will be a million more workers able to join the workforce, mostly women, who will not have to stay home with their kids, but can go and get the jobs that they want to get. And when we talk about education, it's not just for little kids, what we're talking about is making community colleges tuition-free. And that does two things, does two things. Number one, it gives people, young people or anybody, the opportunity to get the skills they need to go out and get the many good-paying jobs in Vermont that are currently not being filled. Second thing it does, if you want a four-year education, you will have two years of college credit that can be transferred to a four-year school, we're going to increase Pell Grants as well. Terms of healthcare, as all of you know, because you've been hearing me saying this for years, I believe that the current healthcare system in this country is dysfunctional, and that it is designed not to provide quality care for all of us, but to make huge profits for the drug companies and the insurance companies. And I believe that healthcare is a human right, and that is why I am a strong proponent of a Medicare-for-all, single-payer system. That's my view. And it's my view, it is not the view of a majority of the members of the U.S. Senate, unfortunately. But this is what we will do in this bill, if I have anything to say about it, and I do. And that is, and that is that we will make the most significant changes to Medicare that we have seen in over 50 years. And that means we will expand Medicare to cover dental care, hearing aids, and eyeglasses. There are too many senior citizens in this country who are walking around, they can't chew their food, they don't have teeth in their mouth, they can't talk to their kids because their hearing aids are inadequate, or they don't have them, hearing aids are expensive. So we're moving on that, and let me tell you what else we're trying to do, and you've got to understand, this is tough stuff, because we're taking on the healthcare industry, we're taking on every powerful special interest in the country. In my view, of all of the greedy corporations and industries that are out there, there's no one more greedy than the pharmaceutical industry and the drug companies. I have made two trips to Canada, one from actually St. Albans up into Canada, one from the Midwest into Canada, and in both cases, the people who were with me on these buses were able to buy medicine for one-tenth the price that they pay in Canada for the same damn product. All right, meanwhile, the drug companies make huge profits, they bribe members of the Congress with huge campaign contributions, they have lobbyists all over the place. In this bill, I hope, that for the very first time in modern American history, we're going to defeat the drug companies, and we're going to lower drug prices in America. And one of the things we're going to do is have Medicare negotiate prescription drug prices with the pharmaceutical industry. In the United States, we have the dubious distinction of being the only major country on earth not to guarantee paid family and medical leave, you know what I'm talking about? What does that mean? It means right now, if you're a worker and you get sick, you've got to go to work, because you're not going to get any support if you stay at home. What happens if your kid, your eight-year-old kid becomes seriously ill, and you're a single mom, what do you do? You call up and you say, "Hey, I've got to stay home with my kid," and maybe your employer understands that, and many will. But on the other hand, some employers will say, "I'm sorry, you've got to come in, and if you don't come in, you're going to lose your job." I have talked to low-income women all across this country, and I have learned that there are women who have babies, and they have to go back to work one week or two weeks after having the baby. Why is that? Because they don't have any income to stay home. How many of you know what happens in Europe or Scandinavia when you have a baby? Anybody know? You get eight, nine months paid leave, because they understand that it is terribly important for a mom and a dad to stay home and bond with a baby, it is good for the baby, good for the family. In this country, we have zero, zero. This bill will provide, doesn't go anywhere near as far as Europe or Scandinavia, but for the first time, it will provide paid family and medical leave, so that folks can stay home with their kids when they're sick, or their parents, or have a baby and not be rushed back into work. And furthermore, I don't, not going to describe the 800 pages in the bill, but there's another provision in it, which is, I think, extraordinarily important. And that is, this bill will put more money into fighting climate change than any piece of legislation. into fighting climate change than any piece of legislation in American history. What it will do is provide the funding to begin to transform our energy system away from fossil fuel to energy efficiency and sustainable energy. What it will do is provide money to help working families weatherize their homes so they're not just wasting a whole lot of money with you know, with air going, warm air going, you know, through the roof or through the windows. And what it's also going to do, which is very exciting to me, we're going to create what we call a civilian climate corps. And that will be a program, we intend at this point, but about $30 billion into it. It will be a program which will allow young people who feel so passionately about climate, we're going to allow them the opportunity to earn good wages, get good educational benefits as they help our country and the world fight climate change. So we're going to get good jobs for young people. And by the way, when you add all of this stuff up that I'm talking about, we are talking about creating millions of good, underlying good-paying jobs. Because the crisis that we face economically is too many of our people are living paycheck to paycheck. The goal is to provide good living wage jobs for our workers. So, that is where we are right now, and this is tough stuff. It is tough stuff because we're taking on the drug companies, we're taking on the insurance companies, we're taking on the fossil fuel industry, you name it. We're taking on the billionaire class that doesn't want to pay their fair share of taxes. This is tough stuff. And we're trying to do that with only 50 votes in the Senate, which means that any one person could say, oh, I don't like this. And you've got a three-vote margin in the House. So we've got the tiniest, tiniest of margins. But I think there is a feeling in Washington that for too many years, the government has been there for the wealthy and the powerful. Now is the time for the government to be there for the working families of this country. And that's what this bill is about. What I want to do now, thank you very much for listening to a long and boring speech. But I felt that it's important. The media has done a very, very bad job in explaining to the people of this country what is in the bill. They're only interested in the gossip and the process. And I just thought it's important, I'm going to do five meetings like this. We were in Springfield yesterday, being St. Jay later this afternoon, it'll be in Middlebury in Brownlboro tomorrow. And I just wanted to at least explain to the people of Vermont, you know, what is in this bill. So you know what, you know what we're talking about. All right, what I want to do now is introduce some great local folks, people who know the issues that you're facing here in Newport. And then we'll open it up for your questions. So let me start off with somebody I've known for many, many years, State Senator Bobby Starr. Bobby?
Well, thank you, Bernie, and and welcome home.
Thank you.
Because you started out in Standard, Vermont, right, many years ago, and it's really great that Bernie's here with us today to explain all the ins and outs in Montpelier. Many years ago, when I was in the House as a representative, Bernie was mayor of Burlington, and we worked on quite a few projects together to help the city. And he helped me and in the legislature get bills passed that would help our farmers by getting the Burlington delegation to support them. So it was really a good working relationship, and that has continued over all these years. If, I don't know if any of you know, but most of you probably do, I serve as chair of the Agricultural Committee as well as a member on the Senate Appropriations Committee. And let me tell you, without Bernie's help and Washington's help, we would be in dire straits here in Vermont. But that federal money came through, the first year, we didn't even dare to do a full-year budget. We were doing what we would call quarter budgets. Because of our revenues were so up in the air, we didn't know if we were going to have money to pay the bills or not. So we only did quarter budgets for that first year. And the federal money started coming through so we could fund our state programs as well as our businesses, help our businesses. And agriculture did very well. Our farmers received over $25 million through the state monies besides what they got from the federal monies. So, you know, that federal money has really made a major difference for our whole area. And then you tap on top of that the PPP program where most businesses could apply for assistance to pay their laborers and their workers. I'm a director of VNA. And we kept meeting and meeting, wondering where we were going to get our money to keep our staff working, to take care of our elderly people, people that needed home care. And finally, this federal money came through and it took care of those problems as well. So besides, you know, these things, our hospitals received large amounts of money to take care of their costs through the PPP program and direct payments to their staff and their hospitals. Our businesses, again, you know, they all did okay. The food and entertainment industry took it hard, and they even received some of this federal money. And now, we've got the ARPA money coming to help out there, and there's billions of dollars coming again to help do our upgrades to our sewer projects, our infrastructure for our roads and bridges. You know, there isn't a town in Vermont with our water quality issues that we're facing that can't use some of this money. In Orleans County and a couple of other towns within the county, we're going to get over $8 million in in help to upgrade, that's Orleans County. I mean, we've got a lot of small towns that haven't got two nickels. So there's a, there's a lot of great things that, I know Bernie said that you can rap on government if you want. But, you know, in times like this, it's when you really, really need the government to come through for you. And I think Washington has done a pretty darn good job helping Vermont out, I know for sure. And I'm sure the other states appreciate this as well. So Bernie, I want to thank you and your colleagues in Washington, but you know, maybe the people don't realize, it does matter who you elect to public office. It does make a difference. And you know, when you're a little state like Vermont and you have the chairman of the Senate Finance Committee sitting here with us, that's pretty darn important. So, again, Bernie, thank you.
Thank you, Bobby. And Bobby raised an issue that I didn't talk about, and that is the billions of dollars that went to state governments that didn't have to lay off workers, or the city governments, and the hospitals as well. And Bobby, thank you for the great work you're doing in Montpelier. Next up is State Representative Catherine Sims. Catherine?
Hello, everyone. It is a real honor to be here with you today and to represent you in the State House. So tomorrow is Labor Day, which is all about recognizing the power of workers to hold their communities. We are here to celebrate workers' achievements, to celebrate your achievements. For the last year and a half, we have been tested in ways that were once unimaginable. And there hasn't been much to celebrate. But the pandemic has made one thing clear. Residents of the Northeast Kingdom know how to step up in a crisis. You all know how to get things done and how to care for each other. You kept our kingdom communities running. It's you, our road crews, our nurses, our shop owners, our teachers. You held it all together. You showed up every day. But our system, this short-sighted American system that values dollars over human beings, this system isn't set up to support you. It's rigged to benefit a few at the expense of many. And the consequences of such a system are now being laid bare. Here in the Kingdom and across the country, workers aren't returning to their jobs. Children can't connect to the internet to do their homework. Families can't afford homes or childcare. And there aren't enough mental health services to meet the demand. And quite literally, our world is on fire. And as painful as this time has been, I can feel a shift. It's here. This moment calls for bold action. It is time to radically rethink our model. How can we better care for each other? How can we ensure that no one is left behind? Thanks to a vast infusion of federal aid, and thank you to Senator Sanders for helping make that possible, we recently passed historic legislation here in Vermont that invests in working families and our future, including universal broadband, high-quality, affordable childcare for all, and housing infrastructure. But this, huge steps. But just one step forward towards a just economy. And there is still so much more work to do. Vermont is lucky to have Senator Sanders fighting so hard for all of us in Washington. For a small state, we are so blessed for our delegation's leadership. But he can't do it alone. We need your voices. All of the voices, especially those who have been historically ignored at the table. We need you to call your representatives, to attend a select board meeting, run for school board, join a protest, insist that we invest in working people, that we combat climate change, and that government work for everyone. Building healthy, just communities starts here, with all of us. Because together, we can fight and ensure a brighter future. It is time to get to work, and we need you all to join this movement. So thank you for being here today.
Thank you, Catherine. John Castle is the superintendent of North Country Supervisory Union. And one of the areas we are paying attention to is education in rural America. John's doing a great job. John?
Thank you, Senator Sanders. Great to see so many people turn out today. Really appreciate the support. First off, I'd like to have a round of applause for all of our staff and teachers and administrators across North Country Supervisory Union. They've done an incredible job over the last 18 months. They really deserve that recognition. They have really stepped up in support of our families and our children, so thank you. Senator Sanders, I want to personally thank you for your unwavering support for public education and your continued defense of funding, federal funding that is so important to our schools. Annually, we depend on federal funds, our federal titles funds that support intervention services in our schools, instructional coaches, and a range of resources that we really could not do without. But thank you, Senator Sanders, for your continued support to ensure that those services are available to us. Under the American Rescue Plan, the ESSER funds, the Elementary and Secondary Schools Emergency Relief Funds, we are receiving almost $16 million, yes, $16 million for our schools across North Country Supervisory Union to support intervention services, school-based clinicians, guidance counselors, increased nursing services, a range of supports and services that will support the neediest children and families that we have in our communities. So thank you for that support. In addition to those broad funds, we are also very fortunate, under the American Rescue Plan, to receive additional funds to support the McKinney-Bento homeless support. Samantha Stevens, who's our Equity and Community Outreach Coordinator, supports and coordinates this effort. We are receiving additional funds, again, to support many of our families that have really struggled over the last year because of the pandemic and employment issues. In addition to those funds, we are also receiving a community schools grant. Now, this is an allocation from the Vermont Legislature, but that is directly from the ARP funds. And we are going to receive almost $230,000 annually for the next three years to support a North Country Supervisory Union Family Center. The Family Center will extend our reach in terms of providing support for families across the Supervisory Union. We will be able to bring resources out to our outlying communities, as well as bring people in to receive services here. We're also very blessed that Senator Sanders is supporting a congressional-directed funding and earmark of almost over $400,000 to support our Family Center as well. We look forward to those resources that will really extend our ability to support families. One of the key ingredients of that are the ability to purchase six vans. These vans would be able to bring people into our Family Center or bring resources out to our outlying communities, and we like to affectionately refer to those vans as Bernie Buses. So without question, we really count on federal funds to support our schools, and we really support the efforts of Senator Sanders to always champion public schools and to be a champion of the Northeast Kingdom. Thank you very much.
Thank you, John. And now I'd like to turn to agriculture for a moment. Matt Maxwell is the owner of Maxwell's Neighborhood Farm. Matt?
Good afternoon. I'm not doing it right anymore. Good afternoon, everybody. I'd like to thank Senator Sanders for the opportunity to be here today. My family operates a dairy farm in Coventry, Vermont. And whenever Labor Day rolls around, I like to sort of shift the focus onto what I feel like is an underappreciated sector of the Vermont workforce, and that's the Vermont farm worker. We have lots of, lots of individuals, men and women both, that make their, make their living working on farms in this state. And agriculture, still, even though we've lost a lot of farms, is still a very important industry for us. And it's very labor-intensive. The men and women who contribute to the production of milk, meat, and dairy products, as well as animal health and land management, often work long hours for low pay. And many of these individuals do not have access to healthcare when they get hurt or sick. And much of the housing provided to them can be substandard at times. Now, I don't pretend to have the answers to any of these problems. I'm not here to blame farm owners or anybody else. It's incredibly difficult to operate a farming enterprise in this, in this region of the country for reasons that are, you know, out of our immediate control. Obviously, it's cheaper to produce what we produce out west. Most farmers are left doing anything they can just, just to keep their business afloat. I would like to mention one organization in this state that is working to improve the living conditions for workers on farms, and that's the Milk with Dignity Program. This group is, this group is sponsored by Ben &amp; Jerry's, and it pays farmers a premium for their milk production, provided that they pay employees the Vermont State minimum wage and ensure housing is provided to a certain standard. This group has made a big difference in the lives of many farm workers throughout the state and deserve increased support. Now, we live in a beautiful state here in Vermont, and the farmers that maintain the landscape are a big reason why. Vermont needs its farms, and those farms need a happy, healthy, and dedicated labor force. So when you're out driving around and admiring the beauty that surrounds us in this great state, remember the men and women who get up early every day, whether it's 90 degrees and humid or 20 degrees below zero with a 40 mile per hour wind, and get out there and do their jobs. Farm workers are an integral part of the communities in this state, and I would like to extend a heartfelt thank you to each and every one of you.
Thank you, Matt, and thank you for reminding us. And thank you for reminding us what we sometimes do forget, how important agriculture is and how hard people in agriculture work every day. All right, what I want to do now is open it up. Katie, we have some microphones down there? Probably what we'll do is we'll take up... We have two mics?
Yep.
All right, we'll have... Maya, you gonna run one?
Okay.
One person go to the left, one to the right.
Go as far as possible.
All right, if you got a question, raise your hand, and we'll try to get to you. Okay. All right, maybe if you could line up somewhere near Freelanders.
Right there, right there.
Okay. Katie, you got somebody? Yeah.
Thank you for being here, Bernie. We've talked about healthcare, environment, social justice, et cetera. How can we help to instill the importance of music in the Kingdom? I'm a music educator. So many towns have had to do away with things like that, which is such a strong foundation for children.
You're absolutely right. Look, and maybe John wants to say a word on this, I don't know. But you're right, all over this country, unbelievably, we are the richest country in the history of the world, yet all over this country, music programs and arts programs are being eliminated. And when we put a lot of money into local schools, I mean, obviously, one of the goals is that kids are going to get a well-rounded education. And music and art are essentially an essential part of that. So you're seeing in this legislation a whole lot of federal money going into school districts, and certainly, those are some of the areas that we expect to see improvements in. Thank you.
Hello, Bernie.
Hi.
I hope you can hear me okay.
Yeah, hold that mic close to you, Matt.
Okay. Is that better?
Yeah.
Okay. This is not going to be news to you. It's two tasks I have for you. The first one, it's not a crisis, it's an ongoing thing, and that is the Social Security Fund. And I know that you know, but maybe you could explain some more the simple way to make sure that that goes on forever by raising the cap? And the second thing is, my question has to do with student loans. And even student loans that are federally guaranteed for private lenders do not have a usury rate on them. And if we could cap that at maybe 2% above the Fed prime rate, my son and so many other people who have to take student loans could pay them off within their lifetime. Thank you.
Very good point. You know, when we talk about the absurdity of some of the things that take place in this country, we are telling our young people, "You gotta go out and get an education or only get a good job." Oh, by the way, you're gonna have to go $50,000 or $100,000 in debt. To me, that's pretty crazy. And that is why I personally believe we should make public colleges and universities tuition-free and cancel all student debt. This bill goes a little way, doesn't do everything that I want. Two years free community college will be a big help. The Climate Corps will provide, if I have anything to say about it, the ability to students to get money or to deal with student debt. But it's an ongoing issue. In terms of Social Security, you're right. Right now, we have a system, as you may know, where I think that the amount is about $130,000 now. So somebody makes a million, somebody makes $130,000, they both contribute the same amount into the Social Security Trust Fund. We want to lift that cap and have wealthier people contribute their fair share into it. Thanks. Okay, sir?
Yep, thank you. Got a question that really involves every citizen, including the kids that have not been born yet. State, cities, and towns have budgets they have to adhere to. With over $28 trillion of U.S. national debt, $150 trillion of unfunded liabilities, how are you planning to, one, create a balanced budget, and, two, begin to pay down the national debt prior to an economic collapse of this country?
Well, I think we have had an economic collapse in this country. When you have people lining up in cars to get food, that's an economic collapse. When you have double-digit unemployment, that's an economic collapse. When kids can't afford to go to college, that's an economic collapse. When you got 90 million people who are uninsured and underinsured, that's an economic collapse. When we are dealing with climate change right now, you see what it's doing right now. It will get worse in years to come. And if we don't deal with that, the economic situation will become much worse. So I do hear you. The debt is a serious problem. In the legislation that we're working on right now, the $3.5 trillion bill, it is my intention, and I'm not the only person in Congress, but it is my intention to see that it is paid for 100%. And then I do believe we have got to continue to chip away at the national debt. But it comes down to priorities. As I think you may or may not be aware, we have spent over $5 trillion on the so-called War on Terror. We have huge military budgets. We give tax breaks to the wealthiest people in this country. So I think what we've got to do is begin paying attention to the needs of working families at the same time as we deal with this serious national debt.
Hello.
Hi.
Can you hear me?
Loud and clear.
All right, so I am... My name is Chelsea. I work up at J-Peak. I see a bunch of other J-Peakers here. My question is, is we have been, not only J-Peak, but every town on the Canadian border has been struggling very, very tough, very hard. My question is, where do you stand on the current closing from our side? And do you... I know our current... You know, Scott has been talking to President Biden, but where... What are our plans? I know September 21st...
Look, I mean, it's a two-country issue. I think we should open up that border as quickly as we can and as safely as we can. Look, I know that especially here, that border closing has really impacted the economy. So we're all moving on it. All right?
Senator Sanders?
Yes.
Sergeant First Class, retired Joseph Chichi, United States Army. Last year, our lieutenant governors, both of them, had a plank to reduce or eliminate the tax liability on Social Security and military pension. I took that $1,400 you gave us and turned it right back to the government to satisfy my tax liability. Do you foresee the federal government enacting anything along that lines to lighten the burden on the retirement of the military and senior citizens across the...
Joseph, thank you very much for your service. And I think you make a good point. I think you make a very fair point. There are a lot of men and women who put their lives on the line who are hurting financially, and I think we have got to do everything we can to support them. So yes, I am supportive of that.
Last winter, there was a lot of discussion about student loan forgiveness. Where does that stand now?
It is not moving as quickly as I would like it. The President is not going as far as I would like it. I think you will see some relief in some respects, but it is an issue... Look, my own view is, you just heard me say, you go all over this state, you go all over this country. You have people who can't buy a home, people who don't want to have children because they're paying off outrageous levels of student debt. For what particular crime did you commit? You got an education, and we wanted you to get an education. So my own view, as I've said many, many times, cancel all student debt. It's an expensive proposition, but I think it's the right thing to do for younger people. That is not where we are right now, but it is an issue that, I can tell you, is being discussed every single day. You'll see some relief, not as much as I would like it.
Hello, Senator Sanders. My name is Gail. My question is on our drinking water. I know in some places it does get contaminated. It happens at my mother's place. My question is also, will they cut back on the fracking or maybe eliminate it a little bit so more people won't have to worry about their drinking water?
I would eliminate fracking tomorrow. I mean, that's my own view. And I think in this bill, you are going to see a very strong effort, not only to cut carbon emissions in all respects, but to deal with pollution as well. I mean, we have to worry about water and... So we are moving in that direction. There is, needless to say, strong opposition from the fossil fuel industry. But I absolutely agree with you. I think, you know, it's just counterproductive of what we want to do as a nation.
Senator Sanders, Chairman, thank you so much for hosting us, letting us know the...
Usually, in Vermont, I'm called Bernie.
Bernie.
Washington, a little bit more formally.
But you look good in that chair.
Thank you, Bernie, for hosting us and letting us know all the good work you're doing in Washington, especially the last few weeks, and coming to hear our concerns. Now, here's one of mine. This weekend, millions of people will be losing their federal pandemic unemployment insurance. How will you use the budget reconciliation to help repair a broken unemployment system? Thank you.
Thank you. You're raising a very important issue, and on top of that, you know, we're dealing with the eviction issue as well, which is a big issue. I can't tell you that it is being dealt with in the reconciliation bill, but it is an issue that I think has got to be addressed. There are parts of this country where unemployment remains very high for various reasons, people can't get jobs. We have got to protect them.
Hello, Senator Sanders. My name is Gail Anderson. My question is unrelated to my profession, but I'm concerned when I heard a few weeks ago about Horizon pulling out of the Northeast and, you know, abandoning the Vermont and Hanford Maine and possibly New York State farmers. What can we do to support these farmers to perhaps reunite into one conglomerate or business and take off and be proud?
Let everybody know what she's talking about. It's a serious issue. Bobby, you want to say a few words on them? Bobby probably is more impressed with what's going on than I am.
Yeah, thanks for raising that issue. We have the Secretary of Ag's holding some meetings right now about what to do with this extra milk. It's about 3 million pounds of milk, so it's a lot of tankerloads of milk. We have a meeting coming up on the 13th of September to hopefully find a home for some of this milk, if not all of it, and working with these people. But Horizon, it's kind of a bad thing. Our guys were the first into this, helped set up a wonderful... Our farmers, and set up a wonderful market for organic milk. And now they're pulling out, going out into the West and buying them, gonna buy their milk out there much cheaper. And so we're working on the issue, and hopefully we come up with a result.
Yes.
Senator Ed Helms from Barton. Welcome from Barton. I have here 250 petitions for the Dolly Parton Imagination Library. As you know, it started in Glover now. It's the first place to start, and Barton's gonna be next. But we need it throughout the Kingdom.
Well, tell us a little bit what it is. I don't know that everybody knows it.
All right. The Dolly Parton Imagination Library is something that Dolly Parton started, and she founded it in her head when she was five or six years old because her father was illiterate. But she knew he was smart, and there were 12 people, 12 children in that family. So what? They were very, very poor. So she said, "When I become successful," which was probably when she was about six or seven years old, "I'm gonna do something about it." And what she did in Pigeon Forge, Tennessee, was when a child was first born in a hospital home birth, they got an age-appropriate book. And every month, a book was sent to them in their name to their home until they were five years old. What difference did that make? Instead of a child having a 200 or 300-word vocabulary, the Dolly Parton kids had a 5,000, 6,000, 7,000-word vocabulary when they started kindergarten. They were either reading or ready to read. We haven't had this in the Kingdom, but the Glover Library has just started it, and children in Glover are getting these books once a month until they turn five years old. And so this petition says, "Let's have it throughout the whole Kingdom." Every child reads in the Kingdom, right? Right? Okay. And so I've been in touch with the Dolly Parton Imagination Library Foundation, and I know that Dolly Parton wants to call Senator Sanders. Our Bernie, do we want him to accept that call?
I would be more than delighted. I'm a big fan of Dolly Parton. All right, thank you very much for that. That is, I think, a brilliant idea. And, you know, human beings develop between zero and four. That's when the intellect develops. And you're exactly right. So thank you. Okay, question?
My name's Eve, and I would like to ask if the federal government mandates standard outlets for electric vehicle charging stations. I need to know that if I buy an electric car, I will be able to charge it anywhere in this country. You're keeping people from really making that change by not having that certainty.
You'll be happy to know that many, many billions of dollars are going into charging stations. You know, what we're doing, the bill is being written... We have the general outline, it's still being written, but I will tell you that obviously you're not going to have electric vehicles in this country in any large numbers unless people can charge them as they travel around the country. So the answer is yes, of course.
Hi, good afternoon.
Yes.
Hi, I was wondering if there's anything in the reconciliation bill or within the Civilian Climate Corps that would directly address affordable housing in our large cities?
Good. Not in the Civilian Climate Corps. Well, that's one of the issues I didn't touch. We are making the law in this bill. We're gonna make the largest investment in low-income and affordable housing in American history. So there's gonna be something, I think the latest count is over $300 billion, going into low-income and affordable housing. So, and that will put a lot of people to work. So that is in the reconciliation bill. Yep.
Good afternoon. My name is Sheila. I've been in touch with your office, Senator Sanders, and your office, Senator Starr, about the closing of something of our COVID testing sites in the state of Vermont. When I had to get a COVID test, I had a 90-minute round trip that I had to make. Now that our students are back in school, and several of them are being sent home to quarantine until they can get the right test, I feel like it's a financial burden on our families to keep our workforce and our students safe. So I'd like our offices, your offices, to put the emphasis on making sure the testing sites are reopened.
Yeah, I've been in touch with the governor's office, and I believe you're from Montgomery. And the governor's office is gonna get people onto that and try to get the office reopened in Ennisburg, and look at other areas in the state where it's been closed and it's creating hardship. So I think your email met quite a bit. Thank you.
Yes, Matt?
Hi, I'm June Goodman, and I'm very concerned about affordable housing at this point. It seems like especially people...
June, hold up, Michael, a bit closer to you.
Especially people on low in... On fixed incomes are absolutely unable to afford housing. And I'm really excited that you're saying money's being appropriated, but I would like to see us find a way to appropriate it that creates new possibilities because some of the systems we currently have isolate low-income people with other low-income people and don't create the kind of multi-level, multi-income level communities.
I agree with you.
And so I'm looking for, how is the money gonna be dispersed?
I think primarily, many of those decisions are gonna be made at the state and local level. But I agree with you. You don't want to segregate low-income people. But I will tell you that there will be the largest investment in American history in low-income and affordable housing coming up.
Hello, my name is John, and nice to see you, Bernie. I wanted to mention about the U.S. immigration policies and have your point of view on that. A lot of people are doing DNA testing now, and they see that immigration has taken... Migration has taken place for long... All the time migration has taken place. I think it's a national embarrassment what this country is doing at the border in terms of damage to families, to children. And I think that we have to remember that the United States contributed to the... Many of the causes of the migration that we're seeing at the southern border now, both through our foreign interventions in the Central American countries, as well as the climate change problems that these people are facing with drought and so forth. We also need to, from my point of view...
Ask the question, it's a good one.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. I spent some time in Mexico, and I see the damage of the deportation. So my other issue is, how can we stop ICE scooping people that are not dangerous in this country and deporting them?
No, I think, thank you for your question. It's an important issue. The immigration system is clearly broken. One of the things that we are trying to do in this reconciliation bill, and why reconciliation is so difficult, is there are certain, you just cannot do anything you want to do under normal legislation. And the reason we have to go this route, it's the only way we can pass significant legislation with 50 votes. We don't have 60 votes to do the things that I've been talking about. But immigration reform is built into the reconciliation bill right now. I hope it stays there. And that is a movement toward, movement towards citizenship for many, many millions of young people, people in the DACA program, other critical workers. And second of all, I know this, you know, immigration is, is a controversial issue, but I think if you talk to people, benefits. So I'm with you on that.
Senator, Senator Sanders, I want to ask you on your stance on the filibuster, if you would support completely abolishing it or reforming it?
The what?
The filibuster.
Yes, I do.
Who are we abolishing it or reforming it?
Well, I'll take what I can get, but right now, we don't have the votes to do either. But it is, you just heard the gentleman talk about voting rights, and we have to abolish the filibuster in order to pass the necessary legislation. As of this moment, we don't have the votes, but I would abolish it, yeah.
Hi, Senator Sanders. I, I'm looking for some political ammunition. I have family, neighbors, friends who are, who are not your biggest fan or the biggest fans of the Biden administration, and they say to me, look at all the for-hire signs. Small businesses can't find employees because everyone's sitting at home with unemployment. So can you explain, can you give me some ammunition to respond to that?
Yeah. Well, for a start, the issue of worker shortage is a very serious problem in Vermont and nationally, but it's not that everybody is sitting home on their unemployment. The states that have rescinded that unemployment benefit are not seeing any more progress than, than other states. Here is the issue, and people want to jump in here, Catherine or Bobby? We now have, as I understand it, I was just talking to the governor about this the other day, we have about 30% fewer kids in high school, in schools, right now than we did 40 years ago. Does that sound about right?
Definitely, maybe more.
Maybe more. So there is a reason why schools are closing or consolidating. All right? We have a birth rate in Vermont, which I believe is, correct me if I'm wrong, the lowest in the nation. All right? So you got an older state, we don't have the kids, we don't have the young workers, and that is why many of these jobs are not being filled. And we're working, I just had a meeting with stakeholders, you know, we've got a major nursing crisis in the state of Vermont. We need nurses, and we are figuring out a way to make sure that we get young people to go into nursing. If we bring money for construction and infrastructure in the state, I was talking to the head of the largest construction company in the state, do you think we have the workforce to do that? We don't. We don't. So the problem, trust me, is not the people, I'm not gonna say that, you know, there aren't some people who abuse it, I'm sure there are, but by and large, we don't have the numbers that we need, and I think we could do a better job in getting kids who choose not to go into college into the workforce more directly at good wages. All right? You know, I'm told there are construction jobs that are available for at least 20 bucks an hour. It's not bad. So we gotta do a better job at that, but the answer is a lot deeper, you know, than just, you know, high unemployment benefits. What we did with high unemployment benefits is in the midst of a terrible crisis. We saved a lot of lives, we gave dignity and security to people who desperately needed it, and I have no apologies for doing that. Okay, sir?
Senator, to me, the meta-issue, the issue of issues, is money in politics.
Yep.
The reason that climate change, Social Security, wealth inequality, so many other issues that enjoy vast public support are not addressed in government is because the donor class pays politicians to ignore them. How long before we see public financing of elections and a ban on contributions to candidates?
Well, you're absolutely right. You know, it's interesting that in a half hour of questions, ordinary people have raised virtually all of the important issues facing the country. Okay? Issue of voting rights, enormously important, your issue. Look, here is the reality. Poll after poll shows that virtually everything that we have been talking about is popular. It's what the American people want. I would say 80, 90% of the American people think we have to lower the cost of prescription drugs in this country. 80, 90, you're Republican, you're a Democrat, you're an independent, you know that you're getting ripped off. And yet, the pharmaceutical industry makes massive contributions, campaign contributions. They have all kinds of lobbyists all over Washington, DC. They buy and sell politicians. They're doing it right this minute. Right this minute. All right? They're putting ads on television, attacking me and other people. So what we need is a, if we're gonna restore a vigorous democracy, you need real campaign finance reform. And you're right, we gotta do away with super PACs, we have to move to public funding of elections, no question about it, and that is enormously important. Once again, we have zero Republican support in the Congress to do that, and we lack some Democratic votes as well. So that's where we are. But you're right. Well, you can do all the things you want to do, but you need the votes right now. The chicken and the egg is that we don't have the votes to do what we want to do, and we don't have the votes because of the reality of where we are. It is a chicken and egg situation, but it is dire. You're right. Yes.
Hi, my name is Rebecca. This is my daughter, Charlie. Hi, Bernie, it's wonderful to see you. Charlie actually asked me a question about respect, because it's something that she's had to learn, and she's also been home, learning remotely over this last year, so she's had to learn a lot about how to learn. And so I wanted to ask the question about educating young people on how to educate themselves with the wealth of misinformation that's out there. How do young parents bring up their children, other than coming to events like this and teaching them as best they can? And is there any recommendations or is there anything being done to address the issue of voter education specifically?
Rebecca, you asked a very important question. And Charlie, how you doing? All right. So you had a rough year at home, huh, Charlie?
A little.
Are you going back to school yet?
I'm already in school again.
All right. Good. All right, look, Rebecca, I don't, this, again, I mean, this is, these are all of the profound questions that we have to deal with. I mean, just, you know, before we even get beyond education, look at the vaccine situation. There are people out there who will die or get very, very sick because they saw something on the internet which is totally off the wall, and they believe it. And you got millions and millions of people who, you know, have really, are into conspiracy theories and everything else. I wish I could give you a magical answer. I mean, and that's why I do meetings like this. But we have to approach it in so many ways. Does the media do the kind of job that it should be doing? No, it does not. But I think, getting back to your question, I'm an old adherent, a believer in things like civics. You know, most young people don't know what the Constitution of the United States is about. They don't know how democracy works, and we gotta get back to that as well. Hopefully, John, with the money we give you, could make sure the kids up here learn those things as well. But it's a real serious problem. All right, maybe one or two more questions. Yeah. All right, and let's end it with the person right there, behind you.
Hi, Bernie.
Yeah.
Bernie, my name is Ben, and I'm from the Northeast Kingdom, and I had a question for you today. Can you hear me all right?
Yeah.
About just the Medicare for All, single pair?
Yeah.
And would that be, a couple of questions. Would that be in addition to what people's healthcare plans are now?
No.
And that's just a point of clarification. And then my other question is about the opioid epidemic and about, I know there's centers here in Vermont, but what can be done to rectify, you talked about taxing pharmaceuticals perhaps more, what can be done to the effect of maybe having the, whoever's responsible, I'm not gonna go into that, but maybe paying their price?
Good. All right, you raised two good questions. Again, it always amazes me, and I hope you all appreciate this, that in a half hour of questions, almost every major crisis facing our country has been raised. I mean, people are thinking about these things. In terms of Medicare for All, this is not complicated. In my view, healthcare is a human right. Everybody should be entitled to it regardless of your income. The function of our current healthcare system is to make money for the insurance companies and the drug companies. The result of that is, we are paying, I hope everybody knows this, we are paying at least 50% more per capita than the people of Canada or any other major country on earth. Anybody here know? If you end up in the hospital in Canada with a serious illness, you're there for three weeks, what's the bill when you get out? Anyone know?
Zero.
Zero. All right? And that is the case in virtually all countries around the world. It's a human right. So what we have to do, in my view, is have one public system called Medicare, which covers everybody. We negotiate prescription drug prices. You can provide healthcare to every man, woman, and child for less money than we're currently spending. So that's my view. In terms of opioids, it is an epidemic, man. It is a very serious problem, gotten worse because of the pandemic. You raise an issue. Here's the corruption. You want to talk about corruption of the pharmaceutical industry? Some of you may have read, anybody read about Purdue, the big giant opiate company? They knew, the evidence is clear, and they were, in a sense, it was proven, they actually knew that the opiate that they were selling widely all over this country was addictive and that the people who were buying it were not dealing with pain, that it was a drug. And they kept selling it. They knew it, and they hired more salesmen because they were making a fortune addicting people. They were, for all intent and purposes, heroin pushers. You know, heroin pushers give you free heroin, get you addicted, and then they make money. That's what these guys were doing. And they made huge amounts of money. They were finally caught, they're paying billions of dollars in fines. Whether it's enough or not, I don't know. But, you know, that's some of what's going on. And Vermont, by the way, does better than most other states, but we still have a long way to go, I think. All right, last question. Yep. Last question, right here.
Hello.
Hi.
How you doing today, preseasoners?
Good.
Hey, my army, um, parade?
A little bit, maybe. Your question?
How was, how was the flooding? How bad was it?
The what, flooding?
Yeah.
Very bad. And unfortunately, a number of people around the country have died, and I worry about future floods as well. Thank you for the question. All right, is that it? All right, yeah, one more, Scott, last question.
So I was just disappointed to read that the Biden administration opened up 80 million acres of the Gulf for drilling, and the Biden administration is being sued, so taxpayer money is being used to defend that. What mechanisms are being looked at to hold the, you know, fossil fuel, not accountable, but maybe like a sin tax to help what they're paying finance the infrastructure for electric charging stations, you know, subsidies on electric vehicles, instead of us paying to defend drilling?
Well, we should not be paying to defend drilling. Look, I am on board legislation which recognizes the fact, just similar case with the opioid, the drug companies, who knowingly pushed the product that was killing people. The drug, the fossil fuel industry has known for decades what their product is doing, and they kept doing it, and they lied to the American people. Should they be held responsible and pay for that? You're damn right they should, and I'm on legislation that would do that. All right, listen, we've, I, I want to thank all of you for being here. This is called old-fashioned democracy. I appreciate your questions, and I'm impressed. I mean, these questions were great questions. You're asking, in my view, the right questions. So let us go forward together. We have major challenges. I think if we stand together, we're not only gonna deal with those challenges, we're gonna make this country a better place in which to live and work. Thank you all very much.